Counselor Miller and Counselor Lyons are both excused absences. Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rules of order, we follow Robert's rules of order and any other rules that are voted in during the organizational planning meeting. Item four, adoption of the Ellsworth City Council minutes from the following meetings, April 18th, 2022, regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? And I should just note for the record, four members or more constitutes a quorum, so we obviously have a quorum. And voting rules remain, it's for routine voting, it's a majority of the members present, so this evening it will be three or more counselors for motion to pass. Item five, city manager's report. Manager Mojer.
Thank you. Good evening, counselors. Real quick, before I get into my report, I just want to send a heartfelt condolences out to the Merchant family, our officer Sean Merchant and former finance director Jen Merchant. Sean's adult daughter was killed over the weekend in a tragic car accident, so there's a lot of suffering in City Hall and in particular in the police department, so just want to send heartfelt condolences out to them and the whole Merchant family for what they're dealing with right now. But on to other things. This week happens to be several national weeks of recognition, so we have National Police Week. So thank you to all of our police officers and dispatch staff that work diligently every day to keep us all safe. It's also EMS Week, so thank you to our firefighters and EMS folks downstairs who respond to the call when folks are in need of medical assistance. And then also Public Works. So thank you to all the folks in Public Works who keep our streets cleared and do lots of other things to keep our city running. So thank you to all of those folks, as this week is national recognition for all of those groups. And then finally, road closure announcement. The city's getting prepared to put the parklet back in place on Franklin Street. It will be happening next week, the end of next week, just in time for Memorial Day. So just wanted to let the public know and prepare them for the section of Franklin Street to be closed from Main Street to the City Hall parking lot. That's all I have, sir.
Any questions? Counselor Captain.
I thought that was a one year, just for one year last year.
Yeah, it was, well, last year was sort of a trial run, and we've got a lot of positive feedback from the downtown merchants that felt it was a valuable resource for them to have. And a lot of other folks, not merchants necessarily, but other folks who gave us positive feedback about enjoying the opportunity to have a gathering spot downtown, so opted to bring it back for this year and see how we can enhance the use of our downtown.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Item six, committee reports. Any counselors attending any committee meetings? Other than the budget workshops, the ongoing. So I would just note that the budget workshops will continue, we'll resume those next Monday, the 23rd. Those are at 6:00. And those will be running right into June.
July.
July, August, forever. Item seven, citizens' comments. This is a portion of the agenda that any citizens can make comments that they wish. Just step to the podium, say your name, and open that.
My name is John Linehan. I've been an Ellsworth resident for 73 years. I'd like to read a letter to the council tonight. Dear councilmen and women, after the March 21st Town Council meeting, I felt compelled to have my attorney, Justine Berry, who's with me here tonight, research conflicts of interest among council members and safety regarding the colored crosswalks. Based on that research, I suggest the decision of the crosswalk be overturned for two reasons. One, a conflict of interest exists within the council to opine on the matter. And two, the affirmative vote contravenes state laws as well as the Federal Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. First, I'd like to address whether a council member should have recused herself from the vote on the rainbow crosswalk based on a conflict of interest. Under Chapter 40 of the Ellsworth Code of Ethics Conduct, city officials shall not official shall not use official authority or position to influence or interfere with or affect the results of any election. Moreover, at the record of the organizational meeting held on November 9, 2020, the council adopted the rule that the council members must abstain from voting whether there is a financial or personal conflict of interest. To add context, Councilmember Hamilton was concerned that consistent with an earlier discussion and recommendation from some community members that the city council will, as a council, as well as individual members, vote on issues and take a position unless there is a specific conflict, at which time the member will identify the conflict and abstain from the vote. Unfortunately, Councilmember Casey Hanson violated the town's Conflict of Interest Code by sponsoring the discussion of the rainbow crosswalk. Pine Hanson is Counselor Hanson's child and spoke at the meeting that night. Her child described being part of the group, the group proposing the rainbow crosswalk in the first place. In that instance, Counselor Hanson owed a duty to the public to identify the conflict pursuant to Chapter 40 of the Ellsworth Code of Ethics and then recuse herself from the vote. Instead, Counselor Hanson said, "I think let the people make their comments, and then we have our discussion. And then I'll save, I'll save my comments for when I make my motion at the end of all discussion." And then later went on the vote on the matter. Ignorance of the law is not an excuse when an elected official violates policies regarding their position. The fact that Counselor Hanson is unaware that a conflict exists is concerning since she holds a public office, which may lead to questions regarding other improprieties. Based on Chapter 40, the Ellsworth Code of Ethics Conflict, and the organizational meeting held on November 9, 2020, I ask that the rainbow crosswalk vote be overturned with Counselor Hanson recusing herself from the vote. Next, I think the importance of addressing the safety concern was severely overlooked except by one council member.
You have about 30 seconds left.
Pardon me?
You have about 30 seconds left.
Okay, thank you. The Association, based on the Governor's Highway Association reported that pedestrian deaths in Maine spiked 200% in 2021. Based on this significant increase, an investigation is underway to determine what factors contributed to this sharp increase. And in closing, lastly, I am disappointed that the town of Ellsworth has chosen to favor one group over another based on their sexuality or identification of sexuality while putting the safety of all its citizens at risk. There were heartfelt discussions at the match meeting. However, the city council really must investigate a better, safer way to show its compassion. By having the crosswalk rainbow colored, you exclude and discriminate against the majority of Ellsworth citizens and put public safety last. Respectfully, John Linehan. I do have multiple sponsors to put this item on the agenda for the June meeting. I hope that you would take it up in advance and realize it's a black and white situation, a right and wrong situation. Thank you very much.
Here's a copy of the letter for everybody. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments?
My name is Steve O'Helloran. I've lived in the city for 57 years and glad to have done so. There's been much chatter in the last few years about Ellsworth conducting its own EMS service, if you will. I know that there's a committee. I had an occasion to experience a 911 call, and I believe the city of Ellsworth certainly could do a better job. Everyone did fine, but there was three firefighters and three EMS, total of six people. Everyone was nice, cordial, but the firefighters arrived long before the ambulance. If the ambulance was here, the ambulance would have arrived with or without the firetruck. I'm not sure of those regulations. I just would like to say that I would support the city running its own ambulance service or a different arrangement than what we have right now.
Any other comments? All right, seeing none. Presentation of awards, there are no awards this evening. An unfinished business, there are no items, which we will then move into new business. New business, public hearing in action on the issuance of business licenses. Madam Clark, is everything all set? And we have some new licenses, so as those come up, we'll check to make sure that somebody's here. First one, Shimbashi Incorporated DBA, Shimbashi Restaurant, 139 High Street, for renewal of a city Class C license for vicular and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, 4 malt, spiritus, and vinous liquor license. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody that wishes to comment on that may do so. Don't all rush at once. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? A R C H LLC DBA Twilight Motel, 147 Bucksport Road, for renewal of a city lodging license. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody that wishes to comment may do so. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve, go. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Bruce? Geary, is that pronounced correctly? Geary? Ellsworth Incorporated DBA Ramada by Wyndham Ellsworth, 215 High Street, for renewal of a city lodging license. This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody wishes to comment? You're going to hear me say this over and over. Seeing none, close the public hearing.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
I'm in favor.
Okay.
I was looking at the next one.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Brian Langley, DBA Union River Lobster Pot, 8 South Street, for renewal of a city Class C license for vicular and liquor, and renewal of a state restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, 4 malt, spiritus, and vinous liquor license. This is a public hearing, open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody that wishes to comment may do so. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes. Douglas J. Keim and Rachel E. Wallace, DBA Homestead Motel and Courtenesses, 143 Bucksport Road, for renewal of a city lodging license. This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody that wishes to comment may do so. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes. Ellsworth Casa Jalisco LLC DBA Casa Jalisco, 205 High Street, for new city Class C license liquor and vicular, and new state restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, 4 malt, spiritus, and vinous liquor license. This is a public hearing, the public hearing is open. First, do we have a representative? There is no one here? In that case, we can't take action, correct? Where it's a new... So first, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Where this is a new license, we require representation?
So do we table?
We can table.
Which one are you here for?
Um, the Crazy Sumo.
Yeah, okay.
So we don't.
No.
So...
Mr. Chairman, I suppose we table? Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? One opposed, motion passes, that is tabled. What I would say is where we're having a special meeting on Monday prior to the budget meeting, if you could reach out to them, we could add that item as well and move that license along. Thank you. Yes?
Were these people advised they had to be here? Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, if by chance they happened to show up, if they think the meeting is at 7:00, for instance, I'd like to be able to go back to this one item.
Absolutely. Anything that's on the table, you can put it back on the table during that meeting or subsequent meeting, so. So if somebody is representing Casa Jalisco and is listening, please come down to City Hall. Crestwell Investments LLC DBA Airline Brewing Company, 173 Main Street, for renewal of a city Class B vicular liquor and amusement, and renewal of a state restaurant Class 2 and 4 malt and vinous liquor license. This is a public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody that wishes to comment may do so. Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
I'm in favor.
I'm going to go.
No, you're fine.
Unanimous. American Dream Restaurants LLC DBA Pizza Hut, 211 High Street, for new city Class C license liquor and vicular, and new state restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, 4, 3, 4 malt license. We have, okay, public hearing is open. Anybody that wishes to comment may do so.
And this is just a new owner, nothing is changing?
Correct. So I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Flexit Cafe and Bakery, 142 Main Street, for new city Class C license vicular and mobile vending units. This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Paul is he? Anybody that wishes to comment may do so. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Crazy Sumo LLC DBA Crazy Sumo, 75 High Street, for new city Class C license vicular and liquor, and new state restaurant Class A Restaurant Lounge. Somebody here? This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody that wishes to comment may do so. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
My son wants to know when you're going to be open.
When are you going to be open?
Hoping August 1st, yeah. Maybe sooner.
All those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes. And 151 Main LLC DBA Riverside Cafe, 151 Main Street, for new city Class C license vicular and liquor, and new state restaurant Class 1, 2, 3, 4 malt, spiritus, and vinous liquor license. This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. This is new. Same. So I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. We do not have a representative for this license, and it's new.
To move to table?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Item is tabled. And if they don't appear this evening, we will add it to Monday. All right. Item 10, public hearing in action on council order number 050001, the Ellsworth School Budget Resolution, Resolutions for FY 2023. What we'll do is we'll come back to, we have to vote on each one separate, so I'll come back to read each one at that time, but at this point, I'll turn it over to the interim superintendent to present.
Good evening. Nice to see you again. Just briefly, because I know we've reviewed this in depth at the budget meeting and also with the school committee, but just to recap a few things about the school department budget in general for this year, the total local contribution this year represents a 1.36% increase, or $155,001.35. The biggest drivers in the budget this year coming up for fiscal year '23 are electricity, as everyone has been talking about, EMS, the anticipated increase is $71,000, and at EHS, it's $97,000, so $168,000 of the increase are those anticipated costs. Supplies for things such as are needed at Hancock County Technical Center, for example, the welding program, all of those supplies have increases. Regular instruction has an increase for two additional educational technicians. Those are regular ed technicians that will be available to help students that need to come out of the classroom for a little bit and perhaps don't have any other services, but it will benefit those students and allow the rest of the classroom to continue learning until we can support those students and have them shift back in to their regular room. And then there are just other regular increases from collective bargaining agreements for insurance and salaries. But essentially, offsetting those pieces are some excellent increases in revenues and some additional revenue from the state, almost half a million dollars, which is helpful. Our enrollment is staying steady, so those pieces are great. Other than the technical center, where the enrollment is up about 100 students to over 300, so some nice changes happening there. And then really other changes such as adult education, having increased, just as the same with the schools, in rent and electricity. So those are really the biggest drivers, as we discussed last time, and I will take any questions that you have.
Can you, just to address the electric, because there's some...
Sure.
A nuance to that that was presented at the workshop that the public would be interested in?
Yes. What more would you like to know about that? Those are, you know, essentially, well, for EMS in particular, that system, as you know, we don't have, we don't have oil there, but it is geothermal driven, so it's all electric at the elementary school and then for the high school. So those are just what we're anticipating in increases for next year based on what we're seeing right now.
Didn't you lose the contract that for, that you had to go back out because the company...
We did. The vendor that we have a contract with went out of business, and so we are paying standard rate right now, correct, Carolyn, for all schools for electricity until such time as we can lock in with a new vendor, and they are watching the market, and so we're hopeful that we will not be having standard rate moving forward, but it'll take a little bit until we know exactly where we'll be.
Counselor Captain.
So you said that some of the increases are because of collective bargaining agreements with increased salaries and increased insurance?
Well, the insurance, so health insurance goes up every year, typically anywhere from 8% to 10%, and then collective bargaining agreements that we have for the educational technicians, teachers, for example, so those are just their, the cost of their salaries. We have several teachers moving into the master's degree lane next year, which is great. They've continued their education, so instead of being on the bachelor's scale, they moved to the master's scale, so that's great for our students. So, so those are the anticipated costs of their wages increasing for next year, yes. In the following year, next year, we will be, many of those collective bargaining agreements are due to be revisited, and I did mention in our workshop that going forward, particularly for hourly employees, I expect a larger impact down the road in order to keep up with local conditions for hourly employees.
What is the percentage paid by employer versus employee on the insurance?
It would depend on, I'm not sure if that's the same for each collective bargaining agreement. So I'm calling business manager Carolyn Heller to help me with that.
Good evening. There we go, that's better. So for the teachers, they pay 80% of their, I'm sorry, the school department pays 80% of the policy, single through family. For ed techs and most hourly employees, we pay single insurance. Anything above a single plan, it's the employee's cost.
So it's just a single pay plan, the employer pays?
100% for ed techs, administrative assistants, and so forth. Bus drivers, school nutrition staff.
Lunch lady, because it's faster to write. So the increase in cost of insurance, because I'm looking at, you know, inflation, it's hitting everybody hard, and everybody else's insurance goes up too, but, you know, when you're dealing with monies that are coming from taxpayers, they're getting less and less to go around. You know, you've got 8% inflation right now, but only 5%, you know, some people are lucky if they get a 5% raise, and that, you know, if you have a set dollar amount of $100,000 or $50,000 for your family income, and taxes go up, and gas has gone up, and food has gone up, there's not as much of that pie to divvy up.
That's very true.
Among the families that are paying your salaries and your insurance and everything else. And every year, things are going up, and where's the breaking point?
Yeah, well, we've actually been very fortunate in Ellsworth. Our insurance is through the MEA Benefits Trust, and its anthem through MEA Benefits Trust. For the past two years, we had no increase. This year, we have an 8% increase. These increases, along with the cost of electricity, that's why we did not introduce a lot of the things we would have liked to have put into the budget this year. There are a lot of capital improvement projects that we're pushing aside, and there are some positions that many in leadership felt very strongly we needed to add to support the instruction and safety of staff and students, and we're not doing that because we have an appreciation for what a difficult time this is for everybody. So we really tried to hold the line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
How many staff are being added?
Sorry?
How many total staff are being added?
There are two staff, two regular education technicians that are being added, and for, I believe, for special education.
We didn't, we moved to, we haven't moved two out of the grant.
So just two.
Okay. And the grant covers it for the first two years, but after that, if we decide to keep it, it's on the Ellsworth taxpayer?
Yes, unless another grant comes around, which sometimes happens, our Title I fund, for example, could increase, and so if it's a position that hasn't been funded locally, we can then pay those positions out of that grant funding. So we're always looking to use those resources first as much as possible.
And so I think the worst-case scenario is two years from now, there's no grant, and we decide not to renew the position. The people that are hired, would they understand that they might have a job only for two years?
Yes. Fortunately, with a system as large as Ellsworth is, typically what happens is staff that we have that are hired already look for the openings that are happening within the system and shift into those positions first, so. Especially with educational technician positions where there's such a shortage of people to fill those roles. I don't know Ellsworth's history, but I think it's been a very long time since districts have had to riff or reduce... have had to riff or reduce, you know, reduce a position because of something like that. Usually, through attrition, retirements, things of that nature, there's something that comes open that people shift into.
So we wouldn't be looking at, like, a lawsuit or contract problem two years from now?
Right, good question, no. And grant-funded employees, that's right in their work agreement, that they understand that they're grant-funded, Title I staff and folks of that nature, yes.
Katrina, Carolyn mentioned some capital improvement items that were set aside. I'd be curious to know, what are the top two that were set aside that didn't make the cut?
The top two that didn't, well, one of the largest pieces that didn't make the cut that needs a long-term solution and conversation in partnership with the city is the track and the lighting at the track. Both the surface and the lighting is going to be very costly, but it needs to be resurfaced, and replacing the lights will be very challenging. And we know that in partnership with the fire department, who has talked to us about the challenges with changing those out. The other piece is replacing the fire panel at the high school. That will be a large project, probably $135,000 to $150,000. But again, it's an aging building, and so that will be, need to be done. There is a list of about 10 items, but those are really the highest priority pieces, other than, I would say, the roof, which, rather than doing it all at once, is being done in six phases. And I would, this would be a good point to make a correction. I spoke in error when you asked me at the workshop about the roof. The section I spoke of was not the section that had been done, that's the next section to be finished, and that is in the budget to be done this coming year. The piece that was leaking in around the library area that you asked about.
Okay. Are opera funds available? You have, what, $900,000 left?
Yes.
Give or take. Are those, any of those funds available for any of these high priority?
So those funds are actually being used for other facilities improvements, so that we do not have to put them in the local budget. Those are pieces that are life and safety issues. So, for example, the high school windows that we talked about on the second and third floor that don't open, there are 26 windows, I believe, and it was something else, bleachers. Bleachers, the bleachers, second, the other side, we did the home side, and we need to do the visitor's side of the bleachers as well.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll know, once we're out to bid, we'll have a better idea of exactly what those, what those pieces will be.
Hold on to your hat on that one.
Definitely on the windows. I think the estimate that we have is probably, as we discussed last week, probably far lower than what it will realistically cost to do the windows. But again, it's a life and safety piece that needs to be done, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Kaplan.
There was something I underlined, but I thought was kind of interesting. Oh, here, under supplies, you have EHS, fine art supplies, $10,000, PE, health supplies, $4,600, science, zero. It says zero dollars.
Is there a particular page you're on, sorry?
Page three of 29.
Let me just go to that detail.
It's hard to believe that you wouldn't need any money for science.
I am wondering if it's in a different place, because, for example, I know for science at the high school, we're replacing the high school science tables, they're the original tables that we use in the labs, and those are slated to be, to be replaced. So, but the ticket, the amount of the item is such that it probably is under equipment instead of a supply, just because it's more than $500. And then otherwise, I'm just looking at Carolyn to take a look and.
I see $24,500 for high school science.
On page three of 29?
Yes. Line 91.
Line 104.
That's equipment. On line 91, there's science supplies.
So there's no.
So we bought a lot of equipment, I'm sorry.
I see, yes.
This is me, I'm like, I grew up in the New York City subway, so I just yell.
Yell right across the room.
And it still echoes today.
The, during COVID, with all of the grant money that we had, we were buying a lot of supplies so that kids would not be sharing, so that students weren't using the same beakers and what have you. So I suspect that we have plenty of supplies at this time, and that's why, rather, we have plenty of equipment. So I have to trust my high school science teachers to put in the requests that they need and to hopefully not put in things they don't.
Okay.
I'll just make a comment that I made at the workshop. So in this budget, there's $2 million of essentially funds that are carried over because they're unspent from prior years.
Correct.
And so that $2 million is filling a hole in terms of that we don't need to fund as taxpayers for this coming year. Last year, I think it was 1.8 million that we used. And so as we start to move out in future years, the amount of carryover funds will become less, and at some point, those expenses, that's the cost of operating our schools, unless there's some dramatic increase in terms of other revenue and state and whatnot, could be, represent a big cliff for the city in the next three, three to five years. So it's just something that I think the whole community needs to understand how that budget's constructed and what's being put into it, that at some point, that could represent a pretty significant issue for the city. And I know we had a little bit of discussion about trying to work more collaboratively as a council and the school board, which I think would be the right direction for the city to start planning and coordinating costs, so that we can be more efficient and prepare for that.
Absolutely.
Councilor Kaplan.
Also, under regular elementary field trip, line 57 on page two, it shows, it looks like it's a part-time position, or is that you borrowing somebody from another class? Because it also comes with field trip retirement at $170, and so I'm wondering, are we paying retirement for part-time employees, or is that because it's a full-time employee who works somewhere else who covers the field trip?
I actually don't know what that is.
It's good to have a table. It is the latter.
So these are regular bus drivers who will pick up field trips during the day, and retirement is paid, if they're members of Maine PERS, it's based on a percentage of their wages. So there's always a little bit of money that follows them on the retirement lines.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right, let me read the entire item, and then I'll open the public hearing. So, public hearing in action on council order number 050001, the Ellsworth School Budget Resolutions for FY 2023. A, order approving state-local EPS funding allocation for public education from kindergarten to grade 12 for Ellsworth schools for FY 2023. B, order approving non-state-funded school construction debt service for Ellsworth schools for FY 2023. C, order raising and appropriating additional local funds for Ellsworth schools for FY 2023. D, order approving total school operating budget for Ellsworth schools for FY 2023. E, order appropriating and raising funds for adult education for FY 2023, as required by the Maine Revised Statutes Title 20-A MRSA, Section 8603-A1. F, order raising local funds for food service in the Ellsworth Public Schools for FY 2023. G, order authorizing expenditure of grants and other receipts for school department programs. H, order authorizing disposition of additional state funding for public schools for FY 2023 in the event of an increase. This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone that wishes to speak on this item may do so at this time?
John Linehan from Ellsworth. I would like to see the school budget voted down with any increase. I think there's tough times out there, a lot of people are feeling it financially, and I think the school needs to hold the line on it. I'd like to see it cut, but at the very least, hold the total budget down with no increase.
Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Councillors. Councilor Heller.
I'm going to abstain from voting on this. My wife is an employee of the school department, and I feel that that's a conflict of interest, and I'm going to step aside.
While we haven't yet to voting, I will say what I said every year since then on the council. My wife is also employed by the school department. However, I have a different opinion on the matter. We, as a council, can only approve the top line of the budget. We don't have any authority for line item votes, which means we can't influence decisions that are made in terms of pay, benefits, or anything else. All we have authority over is that top-line budget. Once the council settles on and approves a budget, whether it's this one or another one, it then goes out to the community for the final authorization by the community as a referendum item. So as far as the definition of personal gain, there is no ability for me to have personal gain by voting on this matter. So I always disclose the fact that my wife is employed, but I also do not believe that it is a conflict of interest.
You want to vote separately?
Yes, we have to take each, each one of these items separately, A through H.
And so when we do this, this is for the total line, each one, or is this?
So each one has a separate amount associated with it, which is embedded in each item, and there should be, are those in front of you? It's in the packet?
It's the ones on your table.
So.
Yeah, I have.
Can I say it this way? Motion to approve state-local EPS funding allocation for public education from kindergarten to grade 12 for Ellsworth schools for financial year '23.
Yes.
We need an amount in the, in the motion.
To, for $7,882,538.34.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Before we get to the vote, just to remind that, that even though there's an abstention from voting, we still require three to pass, because it's the number of members present, not members voting. The other thing that I would say, just to make sure that all councillors are aware of, if any councillor believes that another councillor does in fact have, if you have a different opinion about a conflict, you can bring that up, and there can be a discussion and a vote on that as well, so that you have that discretion. I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that before we get into the voting.
And why does it require three?
Because it's the number of councillors present. You have to have a majority vote, and it's based on the number of councillors present. So if there's an abstention, it's still, the member's still present, they're just deciding, because of the conflict, that they can't vote. So it doesn't change that requirement for the threshold. So we have a motion and a second on item A, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes.
Keep going.
Keep going.
Move to approve non-state-funded school construction debt service for Ellsworth schools for financial year '23 for $88,150.50.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilor Kaplan.
Where is that on this sheet? It's in the budget, so I saw that. Yeah, I see that, I'm trying to figure out where it is over here.
Yeah, that's where we asked Carolyn. Did you find it?
Yep.
Motion a second, all those in favor? Motion passes.
Motion for appropriation of additional local funds as required by Maine Revised Statutes Title 20-A, 15690, 3A to B, for $3,58,167.75.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Opposed, motion passes.
Motion.
The county doesn't try to require four affirmative votes to pass any things in this council.
It requires a majority of.
I believe the charter stipulates like four affirmative votes.
We double-check.
Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, that's fine. It will save us from redoing if we're doing it wrong. So, clerk, what I see is that we have to have four members or more for a quorum, and then voting states that the council may act only by ordinance, order, or resolve, all ordinance orders and resolves, except budget resolves must be confined to one subject, the budget order or resolve must be confined to the subject appropriations only. No ordinance, order, or resolution will be adopted or effectuated except by a majority vote of the council, except as provided by this charter. So that would, by definition, majority vote of the council would mean four, as opposed to?
The quorum of five.
The quorum. Is that how?
That's how it reads to me. That's what it looks like.
Except as provided in the charter in item A, except in budget resolves. Do you reiterate that, also?
No, budget resolves, we just have to, we can't vote all of it at once, we have to break it up. That's what that's referring to.
Yeah, this says quorum voting. Three or more trustees constitute a quorum for the purposes of voting. Each trustee has one vote for the purposes, da-da-da. A mature, an affirmative vote of a majority of a quorum constitutes a majority vote for the board and is required for all board action. With the exception of a determination of vacancy, which requires, so that's that. With the exception of a determination of vacancy, which requires the affirmative vote of four trustees. of four trustees. I don't know what a determination of vacancy is. That's Section 804.
Vacancy would be when there was a seat that is vacant on the council. Not necessarily one.
Just because you weren't here tonight?
Right.
Yep. Okay. So I think you're right. Three is good.
Three is good. Any other opinions on that? Counsel Pancha.
Gary?
Sir?
Are you finding anything that we aren't?
No. I just got a cell phone. My eyes are bad, so I'm looking.
So that's in the charter under Section 8.
804 is quorum voting. And that says a majority of the quorum constitutes a majority vote.
And so that defines the term majority vote, which then, in Section 2, uses the term majority vote. So that puts definition to that.
I believe we're good to go.
Any...
I was just going to keep going.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that everybody had a chance to weigh in if there's a difference of opinion, because I need to make a ruling on it as chair, so I want to make sure I give everybody a chance to...
Section 8 is deliberate, though. I just want to...
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's eight? Okay, that's deliberate. Thank you. So eight does not pertain to this. I apologize. This is messy, but we want to get it right so that we vote correctly. It allows voting by the majority. If you have a quorum, which we do, then the rules are that to vote an item in is by majority. And so whatever that quorum is, if it's four, then obviously then you need three votes. If it's five, you need three votes. That part is clear. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to conduct business. So my question is, why would we be... That would define the majority vote embedded in that, I would think. I wouldn't think that, because otherwise, all of the votes, not just this vote, would require four votes each time, which would surpass the majority threshold.
Mr. Chairman, may I? Under Section 10 dot 05, word usage and definitions. I just meant definition, majority vote, is the affirmative vote of four under definition 10, 05.
How would read that to mean when all seven of us are here?
Do we have our attorney on speed dial?
I do. I'm not sure he's going to answer after hours.
No, I know. Gary? Can you step up there? I want to ask you a question.
Well, they want someone else's phone. It's not on my phone.
Oh, no, I just... Appreciate your... So on... So this is saying that you can... This is for any vote, that definition?
Yes.
So if we have a situation where we can vote and we can take action on any item... Tonight, we have five members, and the authorization to approve is based on a majority. However, it's your opinion that this definition requires... The threshold is if we don't reach four affirmative votes, then it doesn't pass.
For the last 27 years, that's how we've run. Yes, sir.
So it's got to be... It's the affirmative. We can still take votes, and as long as we reach that threshold, we're fine.
It's similar to your prohibition of adding anything to the agenda unless there are six members present. Tonight, you couldn't add anything because you only have five. So that's over and above what a normal majority vote would be. But I knew it was in there, and thank you to my friend Ms. Linehan that has better eyes than I do and found it. The definition of majority is four affirmative.
Thank you. Appreciate it. This was a good meeting for you to be here, Gary.
You'll face so after I put that in the green.
We're going to table it. No, I'm just kidding. So based on that, I think that does sound clearer in terms of if the standard is that you have to have a minimum of four affirmative votes for an item to pass. When you get down... You can have a quorum, and as long as we reach that threshold of four, we can... Those items will pass. If we end up in a situation like the last vote, where we don't reach four affirmative votes, then the item does not pass. So it doesn't mean that we can't conduct business, and it doesn't mean that we can't pass initiatives when our membership is below the seven. It just means that we have to have four in the affirmative on each matter.
On a budget item or any item?
Based on this, it would be any item.
Any item, if we go by the letter of that. And for these things that we're voting on that have individual items, we can pass some but not others? That's like a possible thing to do?
That's...
I don't understand what that will look like when I go to vote.
Well, if we don't pass the whole... I'm assuming for the school board, if we don't pass the whole, it has to go back...
And then we have to have a special election.
And then we have to resolve this.
We got to have a special meeting.
Can we revote on those things now that we know something different than we knew before?
Well, the first two passed with four, so you're set there.
At this point, I'm going to call for a brief recess. Put the council in recess. We need to get this right and do our best to make sure that we're... We have that down, and I'd rather spend a few minutes consulting and doing that. So we'll take a recess for a few minutes and then return.
Yep.
Is there any point in trying to move the rest of them if they're all asked to go back anyway?
Absolutely. All right, we will reconvene. So in terms of just looking through this and trying to sort this out, and I appreciate Mr. Fortier raising with his experience on the council, his years of experience, that's very helpful. I think this is the first time we've had a situation that I've been involved in that we've had this low number. So the interpretation of it, the way that it reads, is it defines majority vote, and so a majority vote is four members in the affirmative. That's the definition. We can conduct business as a council as long as we have a quorum, which is four or more. However, it also states that that definition, which is capitalized, is capitalized throughout the rest of the charter so that that meaning follows wherever that is put. So in the course of passing ordinances, resolutions, we are still required to meet that definition, which is four or more, even though our numbers are less. The majority requirement in terms of a vote doesn't apply if that definition isn't met as well. So we have to meet that definition in our votes. All the votes we've taken up to this point, up to that last vote, we've met that threshold, and we can continue to vote on items, but we have to meet the threshold of four or more for an item to pass. We'll revisit where we were with the budget in a second. I do want to have Interim Superintendent just step up to explain what the process looks like and all of that going forward so that everybody understands. I know we have a motion on the table, but this is important for the council to have the full information before we continue voting.
Sure, thank you. So two pieces. If this article fails, it would mean we will not meet the deadline to go to referendum. Is that correct? And that has already been put into place. We would have to go back, and I believe that piece of the process would have to be done. I'm not sure what the cost to the city is to do that, $7,000 or $8,000, I believe. So additionally, this particular article, the $3 million additional local, what happens is outside of the EPS formula, there are items that are not covered or not recognized or fully funded under that formula. So this additional local piece covers special education costs, technology costs, transportation costs such as busing, professional development costs for teachers, and for all staff, actually, and system administration costs. So the school department, essentially, if this article doesn't pass, would have to determine what we would do going forward in order to bring a budget back that would pass. And I don't think we'll find $3 million in paper and pencils. I can assure you of that.
Thank you. All right. With that said, we had a motion, we had a second, and we voted. And the motion did not pass based on that. If there would be one council that could put this back on the table, if not, we'll move on to the next because we've already voted. And the only way to revisit a vote is to have a member of the majority vote, in this case, it would be not passing, would have to put it back on the table to revisit.
I'm sorry, you're saying the person to put it back on the table would have to be a person who did not vote for it? Is that what you said?
Correct. Correct. That's the way, because otherwise issues would just relentlessly. So it's got to come from that. So I just want to make sure everybody's clear about that process. And otherwise, we will move on to 10D, Order Approving Total School Operating Budget for Ellsworth Schools for FY 2023.
So there's still an opportunity to put it back on the table?
Yes.
Do either one of you want to put it back on the table, knowing that it's probably going to cost us thousands of dollars to have to revisit this?
But if we can save hundreds of thousands of dollars by looking at a different number, that would be different.
And Council, Allen can't put it on. He abstained from the vote, so he's not in that.
Okay.
So at MD, is there a motion?
Motion to approve total school operating budget for Ellsworth schools for financial year 2023, $25,379.34 and 25 cents.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion fails. Item E, Order Appropriating and Raising Funds for Adult Education for FY 2023 is required by the main revised statutes, Title 20-A MRSA, Section 8603-A1.
Move to approve appropriating and raising funds for adult education financial year 23 as required by the main revised statutes, so forth, for $287,753.38.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. F, Order Raising Local Funds for Food Service in the Ellsworth Public Schools for FY 2023.
Move to approve the order to raise local funds for food services in the Ellsworth Public Schools for financial year 2023 for $208,181.09.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. G, Order Authorizing Expenditure of Grants and Other Receipts for School Department Programs.
Move to approve the order to authorize expenditure of grants and other receipts for school department programs.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. H, Order Authorizing Disposition of Additional State Funding for Public Schools for FY 2023 in the Event of an Increase.
Move to approve the order authorizing disposition of additional state subsidies.
We have a second. Any discussion?
And that stipulates that it goes where?
We're about to get the answer.
I just want to make sure that's part of the motion.
So it doesn't stipulate where. I know the last time this happened, that the school department used some of the funds to add some expenditures for, I believe it was staffing, that were needed that came to light since the budget had passed, and the rest, they used to decrease the local appropriation.
Do you have a friendly amendment you want to suggest?
That it comes back to the city rather than the school board. And the reason we did that last year, Katrina, because I totally forgot to make that motion a year ago. In prior years, I've made it several times. My feeling on that is that once the citizens have voted to appropriate X amount of dollars, if the city was to come in to, I'm sorry, if the school was to come into more dollars like they did last year, $675,000, that it should all be returned to the residents.
I understand that, and I wasn't here, so I don't know exactly the circumstances. The same thing happened in Hancock, and we did exactly as you said, only because we were able to. Nothing else had come to light. It was all returned to citizens. So I think it would be a conversation, absolutely, that would happen at that time, pending, of course, whatever your motion is that passes. So thank you, I appreciate the.
I would offer that as a friendly amendment.
Councilor Hanson, do you want to accept that? It's your motion.
What if I don't want to accept it?
You just say you don't want to accept it.
Then what?
And then we vote on the motion on the table.
So the question is, if the state wants to give the school more money, do I want to say what my motion was, was it goes to the school, or does it come to the city? Oh, then I don't want to accept it.
Okay. So we have a motion, seconds, on Order Authorizing Disposition of Additional State Funding for Public Schools for FY 2023 in the Event of an Increase. Any further discussion?
So if there's an increase, it's all going to go to the school, but not to the taxpayers, as it reads now?
As it reads now. It's not included in this particular motion. That doesn't mean that another motion can't be made after this one, but the motion that's on the table, we have to vote on. So as it reads now, as it's been presented, it does not stipulate where the funding goes, should the state provide additional funding. All those in favor? All those opposed? Fails. All right. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could I make a motion on that item?
You may.
That I would move approval of the Order Authorizing Disposition of Additional State Subsidy in the event the Ellsworth School Department receives more education subsidy than the amount indicated in its budget, that the monies will be returned to the city.
So you have a motion?
I would second that.
We have a second, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion fails. So we're at the same place we were. So portions of the school budget have been authorized. However, it cannot go out to referendum, partially approved. The items that did not pass include C, D, and H. As Chair, I have the authority to call a special meeting of the council. I am calling a special meeting of the council to take place prior to our budget workshop on Monday, next Monday, the 23rd. There's already some items scheduled, but we will also have a special meeting to revisit the school budgets that provided the school board is able to meet and come back and present. I'm seeing a nod, so the council should be aware and the public should be aware that we will have a special meeting next Monday, the 23rd, to revisit the budget. We're not going to leave this there. However, if there are recommendations from the council to the school board in terms of particularly what you would like to see changed so that they can have that information in their deliberations, that would be helpful. So if council members would like to share their feedback with the school board, that would be helpful.
I just think that we can do a little bit better on the cost to the taxpayers.
Any other comments?
The only change that I would make is where any additional funding goes. Other than that, I'm fine with it.
And Councilor O'Halloran, even though you're not voting, you're certainly welcome to share feedback.
I'll stay out of it.
Just wanted.
Thank you, though.
Okay, moving on. Item 11, Public Hearing Discussion in Action in Adoption of a New Ordinance Entitled the Overnight Mooring and Anchorage Control Ordinance.
I'm the councilor, Chair. I'd like to start off this discussion. We have some folks from the city who have worked hard on this ordinance here. But before we get into the meat and potatoes of the ordinance, I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, this ordinance was drafted by city staff at the guidance and the request of the council. And in drafting this ordinance, a committee was formed, and several meetings were held, and the discussion was, we took into consideration many of the public comments that were brought forward at the multiple public hearings that were held over the course of last year, as well as guidance and from the council as to what they would like to see in an ordinance. So that's where the ordinance stems. And in addition to that, you know, I just wanted to make sure, you can see, we have a significant crowd here tonight, most of whom are here regarding this ordinance. And I would just ask that we don't revisit the issues of the past. This ordinance was not written specifically to address one particular issue that we had repeatedly come up last year. The ordinance is to address an overreaching issue with the lakes and ponds in the city of Ellsworth, a concern for environmental concerns, a concern for a potential threat of individuals getting houseboats, putting them out on our lakes and renting those out for short-term rentals, and what that would look like for our citizens, not only those who live on the lakes, but those who like to recreate on the lakes as well. In addition to that, this ordinance is also, again, at the guidance of the council, who gave the direction to the staff to do this, we looked specifically at an overnight ban to prevent folks from staying overnight on our great ponds. And in addition to that, you'll see the definition of a houseboat is pretty broad to encompass more than just a traditional, what you would think of a houseboat that you've seen with living quarters and so forth. So I think the staff did a good job to try and meet the council's expectations with this ordinance. And I hope that folks, if they do have comments about the ordinance, that they direct those comments to the council specifically about changes or things they'd like to see different in the ordinance, and not revisit the issues that we've had in the past on Green Lake, because that's not what we're here for.
Councilor O'Halloran.
Could I just remind you that two of us wasn't present for this? So this is brand new to us, and I'd like to hear everything that everyone's got to say.
Well, I guess my only response to that would be, Councilor O'Halloran, is that that's not what the agenda item is. The agenda item is specifically the ordinance, not to redress all the issues that we had last year on Green Lake. But if you.
Councilor Captain.
Does this ordinance apply to everyone, including the people that own property on the lake? Or does it just apply to people who don't own property on the lake?
No, there's no provision in the ordinance to allow. No, there's no provision in the ordinance to allow property owners to more a craft that's described as a houseboat overnight and reside on that craft.
A lot of small watercraft have, you know, like a cuddy cabin or whatever it is.
Kind of like a little V-berth or something like that.
Yeah, that could be applied to as a houseboat. If it's got the porta potty and the cuddy cabin, then people who own property wouldn't even be able to put their own boats overnight.
Well, and that's the point of this meeting, is for people to bring up changes that perhaps they'd like to see in the ordinance, and for the staff to potentially make those changes.
So why don't we have the ordinance presented so that everybody's aware of what the public's participation in terms of what it says, what it is, and then we'll get into the public hearing for comments, and then the council will have an opportunity to also discuss it.
Good evening, Councilors Shannon Richards, Economic Development Director.
Lori Roberts, Code Enforcement Officer.
So in your packet that you received, there is some history on this issue, the greater issue, that's happened over the past year and a half, actually, probably longer than that, since we started getting complaints in the summer of 2020 regarding this issue. So we're going on probably two years now. So in your packet, you'll see that there is a memo prepared particularly regarding this ordinance, but then there's also the ordinance itself, the draft ordinance itself, as well as two sets of minutes that cover from April 2021 as well as September 2021, when this issue was brought forward to the council at that time. And in between there, there was actually a workshop that was held in June of 2021. So this has come before the council three times now, and this would be the fourth time to present this ordinance. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of that history and what's in your packet. So at the final, or the last meeting that we were at in September of 2021, I just wanted to read into the record what the motion was that was taken that night and that was approved. So it was to authorize city staff to develop an ordinance that restricts the overnight mooring or anchoring of boats, floats, houseboats, or other floating structures to landowners and/or individuals who have received written permission from a landowner. So the draft ordinance that you have in front of you, just in summary, prohibits houseboats from mooring or anchoring, and there's a definition of that within the draft ordinance on an overnight period. There's also a definition of that in the draft ordinance, which is 10:00 PM to 4:00 AM, except in cases of emergency. Obviously, there can be breakdowns and things like that on the water on any great pond in the city of Ellsworth. So not specific just to Green Lake, but also Branch Pond, as well as Graham Lake and parts of Totty and Lower Patton Pond. This does not apply to the Union River. That is Chapter 3 of our existing ordinances. And just furthermore, Branch Lake has its own set ordinance because it is the city's drinking water supply. So there are special regulations in Chapter 55 that pertain to that. So throughout the past, you know, year and a half, we've heard several comments and concerns from both the public as well as the council. In this committee that we formed of staff, we tried to narrow down the focus of what those concerns really are. And so we came up with the fact that there was a need for environmental protection on our great ponds within the city of Ellsworth, as well as a concern for property rights and a need to regulate extended or overnight stays on great ponds. So with that in mind, we drafted the ordinance that's in front of you. I will just say that the directive from the council was to regulate boats, floats, houseboats, and other floating structures. The definition that is within the draft ordinance in front of you is broad enough to encompass boats, floats, or other floating structures, so long as sleeping and/or toilet facilities, permanent or temporary, are found upon or within the craft. The council's motion also asked that we restrict the overnight mooring, anchoring to landowners and/or individuals who have received written permission from a landowner. As Manager Moser noted, that staff believes that if the primary purpose of the proposed ordinance, which is environmental protection and to regulate extended overnight or short-term rentals on great ponds, that the ordinance should apply to all houseboats on great ponds in Ellsworth, regardless of ownership by a landowner or permission from a landowner. That said, the research that we've done on this issue, there are places that have put a mechanism in place where landowners, as well as people who have permission from landowners, are allowed to have a houseboat on the lake overnight. It just requires paperwork to be filed with whatever entity. So the best example that I have for you is the state of New Hampshire actually regulates the overnight mooring of houseboats on their, they're not called great ponds there, but you've got, like, Lake Winnipesaukee, let's say. Everybody, I think, is familiar with that lake. Since it is a state system, any landowner on Lake Winnipesaukee is required to file a notification to their Department of Environmental Protection that basically says, I will be having a houseboat moored at my house or anchored at my house for however long that's going to be, and it's got registration number, whatever, on it, so that there's some sort of paper track to that vessel. And then the same occurs that if you are a landowner and you are letting a friend or a family member, whatever, do the same at your household, that you provide that written notification. So we don't have a system like that in place in Ellsworth currently. Something like that would have to be created to be able to have a tracking system. You noticed that the hours of overnight are 10:00 PM to 4:00 AM, which would pretty much probably fall on the off-hours of our Code Enforcement Office. So while the Code Enforcement Office can field violations, it would more so fall on our police department to have to effectively enforce this ordinance. I think that's it. Obviously, we're here to take any questions, if there are any.
Councilor Kaplan.
So if somebody buys their property and their daughter or son brings their boat up, it's got a V-berth and a toilet, they cannot moor that boat without the paperwork?
So with this ordinance, they wouldn't be able to do it at an overnight period at all. If there was a change for a landowner or with landowner permission, then there would have to be paperwork behind that. So I'll just kind of repeat the rationale while we didn't include it, is because if there's an environmental concern and a concern for short-term rental and overnight regulation and stays, should it, the question that we were stuck with is, should it matter? Should it matter if, you know, I like to think that I'm a good steward of lakes, but, you know, maybe my guests aren't, and so is there going to be a similar issue? You know, the only difference is that you have, so if there is an issue, you have an address, so you can actually go speak to somebody and hold them accountable, wherein the case that if it's not a landowner, then there's no tie there. So you have to have some sort of tracking to be able to understand, you know, if they have not supplied notification that they're going to be staying at a household, they would automatically be in violation.
And so a lot of our lakes are owned by people who don't live in Maine. The properties around them are owned by people who don't live in Maine. And so would this apply to those boats, if they're trailing them up from other states and possibly bringing mill foil with them?
Yeah, so there's no differentiation as whether it's an in-state resident, out-of-state resident. It's overarching and umbrellas every person that would have a houseboat on any lake.
And houseboat is described as any facility or any boat within which are sleeping quarters and toilet facilities.
So it's any ship, boat, raft, float, cabaran, or marine craft of any description upon or within which are located sleeping and/or toilet facilities, regardless of whether such facilities are of a permanent or temporary nature.
So that could be just a cuddy cabin with a V-berth?
Yes.
And so as a property owner, you wouldn't be able to moor your boat there?
That's right. You'd have to, that's right.
You'd have to take it out at night. It's according to this ordinance.
According to this ordinance, yes.
And just to remind everyone as well is that this is the first draft of an ordinance. As a council, we can take lots of different action. You all know that. We can approve it, not approve it. We could send it back for revisions. We can make recommendations for revisions. I personally, I think that when we get to an ordinance of this substance locally, my preference would be that we would have all the entire council here to vet that. And so I think for me, it would be nice to be able to send back our feedback so that it can come back to the full council at some point in the near future to look at. That's just my personal opinion on that. But we don't have to, it's not just necessarily an up or down vote on what's in front of us. We have lots of options to pursue around this particular issue. I do know that the state has, it's been batted around a few times at the state level. Nothing's happened yet, but there's been some push for a statewide ordinance. Again, my personal feeling is that the more you can do at the local level, the better to address situations that come up. So anyways, those are my comments, just in terms of what we can do as a council with this particular agenda item this evening. Councilor Blanchett.
I don't own a boat, and I have no idea what a cuddy cabin is. Can someone explain what that is, please?
It's where you have sleeping quarters and the V-berth, the front of the boat.
The pointy part.
Okay. I thought you were referring to some kind of bathroom. All right. I'm glad I asked.
Since this is, Councilor Hansen, go ahead.
Well, I was just thinking that sleeping, toilet facilities are pretty easy to figure out because there's chem toilets or whatever. A sleeping facility might be trickier to decide if something was a sleeping facility?
Yeah, so it offers broad interpretation, probably for a reason. This was also looked at from the state of New Hampshire. I'm assuming they might have some people that are creative with where they sleep and might have had issues with it. So this gives broad authority and discretion. But pillows, blankets, mattresses, you know, the like.
But I'll just say, just to say that I appreciate that the way that you have written it is for all people to follow the same rules. I live on the Union River. The river is not mine, so I follow the same rules. I get to live near the river and look at it, but I follow the same rules as everybody else on the river, and I think the lakes should be the same. Yeah.
Councilor Kaplan.
So if there are no sleeping quarters or toilet facilities, and somebody just anchors their boat, does that apply here, if it's anchored for the summer?
No, no. So if you have a regular boat, rowboat, let's say canoe, kayak, whatever, no toilet facilities, no sleeping quarters, then it's allowed to be moored or anchored, sorry, overnight on the lake.
I wonder where they use the restroom.
Well, since this is a public hearing, I will, I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is open, and I just want to, we have a large group with potentially a lot of people wanting to speak. We will adhere to the three-minute rule. You'll have three minutes to say what you want to say. I will stop you at the three minutes and ask you to stop talking at that point. I would also, based on history with this item, this is an issue that the council is taking up in terms of an ordinance that's been presented to us. You're welcome to say what you want, but please direct your comments to the council, not to the audience. This is not going to be, not going to allow it to get into a debate between individuals. Share your perspective, your feelings with us, so that we can consider your opinion, but don't get in the back and forth. The other piece is that you will have an opportunity to speak once, and only once. Once everybody has had the opportunity to speak, we will close the public hearing, and then the council will take up the matter and move it forward. So with that, I would invite anyone to just please state your name, where you live, and then feel free to say what you want.
Good evening. My name's Patty Hamilton. I live at 493 Scotts Neck Way. And first up, I want to thank the council and thank the drafters because they did an amazing job. I know it's been a really difficult issue, and we've been talking about it for some time, so I really appreciate all the efforts that have gone into it. I know that, you know, we have traveled other places, and particularly down south. This is a big issue, and I think it's a big issue for us coming here. I know locally, there's been many communities that have adopted ordinances. They're all a little different. Casco, Belgrade, Sidney, Winthrop, Brangely, Wayne. Some are bigger communities, some are smaller, some have more lakes, some have smaller lakes, but lots and lots of communities are struggling with this very issue. So again, thank you for taking it on and for wanting to protect the water quality of the pristine resource that's here in Ellsworth, Maine, and balancing the needs of lake owners and visitors. I think that's very important. I do agree with Councilor Kaplan that the definition might need a little tweaking because it's, you know, whether you might say, irregardless of the facilities. I'm not an expert in that kind of thing, but it seems like that might need a little tweaking. And the hours, perhaps, could be sunrise or sunset. Those are just a couple of suggestions that I have. Again, thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I'm Marjorie Adams, and I live on Scotts Neck Way on Green Lake. I want to thank you for considering this ordinance. I would certainly support it. I live in a certain zone. There's, all the areas in town are zoned, so you know what to expect in your neighborhood, if there are going to be houses or businesses or that sort of thing. So I know how close my property owners will be, except my property that abuts the lake. As it is right now, I could end up with an unexpected neighbor or even a neighborhood. And I think people who live on a lake expect it to be just water instead of living facilities, however temporary. Thank you for considering it.
I am Lane Rowe. I live on Scotts Neck Way, and I too want to thank the council for taking on this hard task. And I would also like to thank Councilor Kaplan for her suggestion that we have an issue with maybe tightening up a definition. And I don't really have too much to say that hasn't already been mentioned, but I really appreciate the fact that we're trying to balance homeowners and people who are recreating on the lake. And I think this is a really good solution, that people can come out during the daytime, do what they want, be where they want, but it's just at nighttime you have to go away. And I really applaud everyone's efforts at. And I really applaud everyone's efforts at this. I know it's been really tough, so thank you very much.
My name is John Linehan. I'm opposed to the adoption of any new ordinance of this type. I think Ellsworth is like a lot of the states in our country. It's already overregulated. I believe there's laws in effect that can prevent problems like the people are trying to do without having an ordinance of that type. I think if there's laws that are already on the books, and there's disorderly conduct, there's damage to destruction out there, those are already there to protect the people that are out there. I'm for individual freedoms. I'm for constitutional freedoms for our country. And I believe the ordinance, any type of adoption of this, new ordinance of this type should be turned down.
Well, here I am again. My name's Terry Pickham. Been a Ellsworth resident for 40 years at both 474 Bagel Road and 586 McCullough Road. Spent my entire life, as we've talked about before, on Green Lake specifically and the waters of Maine. And I've never heard of anything being drafted like this. We spend the winter out there in ice shacks to a tune of 120. We sleep in them overnight. People have to go to the bathroom out there as well. That's not being an issue. Nobody cares about that for six months out of the year, but for some reason, these three summer months are a gigantic issue. And as far as being able to see the beautiful lake in front of your house, I mean, these ice shacks are out there much more egregious than any kind of floating structure, which we are the only houseboat on any lake in the Ellsworth area. So I'd just like to say that I am opposed to any ordinance in any manner restricting Title 127, Article 17, which is the Great Ponds of Maine Act. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you for your time, counsel.
Andrew Hamilton, 493 Scotts Neck Way. First, I just want to say some thank yous to Counselor O'Halloran. Thank you for your truck that took care of a landscape company that got stuck on the hill, and you were able to get them up the hill. They were working on our camp property this winter, and without your company, I don't know what we would have done. So thank you. To Council Chair Gail Hamilton, to Glenn Mosher, city manager, to all councilors of the city of Ellsworth, thank you for your patience and the opportunities to learn together. I thank Economic Development Director Janet Richards for developing an overnight mooring ordinance. I think it makes sense. It says, unlike ice shacks that are out there in the winter, which we absolutely tolerate, it's part of Maine tradition, there's something new that's happening on Maine waters and New Hampshire waters and all waters of the United States. And that is, you're going to see overnight rentals. I've seen it with bed and breakfast rentals on the upland. We're now seeing it on the waters. And I think you've got to do something, and I think this is a sensible step for you to take. I do have three tweaks I'd like to suggest to the ordinance, and then suggest you might table it to a meeting, as your council chair suggested, when all city councilors can be present, can hear opinions on this. The first suggestion I'd make is, the hours of 10:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m. don't allow for regular sleep. If you have grandkids like we do, he goes to bed at around 8:00 o'clock. If there's partying that continues until 10:00 o'clock in the evening, that can be a problem. So we'd recommend 8:00, 8:00 p.m., which is on average, sunset in Maine. If you look at the sunset and sunrise charts, you'll see that. The second thing I would suggest is that you do make provisions similar to what the state of New Hampshire's done for Winnipesaukee and other waters in New Hampshire. And just clarify that if an owner wants to place a swimming float or a Coast Guard registered watercraft out in front of their property, that they give notification to the city with their property address, so that they can be tracked, either by the police department or the code enforcement office. And that notification should be on file. Finally, I would suggest that the definition of houseboat be tightened. I think it's a good definition, but I think you could say upon which are located possible overnight occupancy facilities, including but not limited to toilet, sleeping, or cooking facilities. We've had a lot of litigation in Maine as to what constitutes a residential dwelling. One can take themselves outside the ambit of residential dwelling by simply removing either sleeping or toilet facilities or cooking facilities.
That's three minutes.
All right. Thank you. I'll respect your limit. Thank you, Counsel Chair.
Any other comments? All right, seeing them, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Counsel. Counsel Hanson.
I just have a question, which is, as it's written, would this also apply to ice shacks?
No.
No. Because they're not floating? Can I say one more thing, which is that it just seems like the people who are in this room who are property owners, I haven't heard any opposition to the idea that if you have a boat with a chemical toilet or a bench for sleeping, you have to take it out every night. I would have expected there to be opposition to that part of it, but I didn't hear any. I'm just noticing that.
And there's nothing about what you can moor during the day and how close to the shore it can be. So can I make a motion that we table it for clarity?
Is there a motion?
Can I ask one quick question before we go to your motion, which is, in some of the other information that you sent us, it sounds like if we approve an ordinance like this, we are also agreeing that we're going to need to create a new staff position to enforce the regulation?
No.
Oh, okay.
Enforcement would be handled within the police department. Complaints of this nature typically would come in in the morning. If code is available to assist, then they would be asked to assist the police. But the issue of any eventual summons would be the hand of the police department.
Okay. I'm just reading this part of the memo that says, whether the council considers regulation of floating structures or warnings or both, a new staff position would need to be created in order to enforce such regulations. That's some old thought?
Yeah, that was the memo from June 2021, prior to the meeting in September, when the directive was given for this type of regulation.
Counsel Kaplan.
And would we have to get a police boat at some point? Because if they're in the middle of the lake recreating and overnight for days on end, then how are you going to get to them?
Well, we have a drone, which could accomplish most of our goal. But if we did need to, we could either rely on, we have a boat within the fire department that we could utilize, or also the warning service has boats that we could access if we needed to.
Counsel Kaplan, do your motions stand? So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to table the item. All those in favor to table it?
Okay.
All those opposed? Motion passes. The item is tabled.
So, sorry, I don't mean to still be up here. But, so we heard a lot of the feedback from, from the public on some of the tweaks that they would like to see, but not a lot of that feedback from the council. Counselor Kaplan did hear maybe some changes to the houseboat definition. But there was comments about the hours from one of the public comments, as well as the potential to add cooking facilities, the potential to regulate floating rafts, regardless of whether they had the sleeping quarters or the bathroom facilities. So is it possible to get more council feedback based on that public comment at the next meeting? Because otherwise, we don't have anything, the staff doesn't have anything to go off of to make modifications to the existing ordinance or the draft.
Counsel O'Halloran.
I'll give you some feedback. I'm not sure it's going to be popular, and I'm not sure it's a representation of this council. But I'm against ordinances, but I'm for everybody getting along and finding a way on Green Lake and Branch Lake and what have you, to let everybody have their fun and, and try to be respectful of everybody. I think there's a root cause of this whole thing here. And I would ask everyone to respect everyone, whether you're a camp owner renting a camp and partying until midnight, or whether you're a float guy, or whatever you are. We're all adults. And I'm not answering your question, but I am giving you some feedback as an individual that this is a lake. People are going to have different enjoyment styles. I'm not for any of the foolishness that's going on. And if you're really concerned about the lake, how about testing everyone's septic system? As worried about a few fishermen doing the wrong, we've got several camps around all the bodies of water. And if we're really concerned about the environment, I think there's many places we could start. And one thing would be helpful, if everyone respected everyone's properties.
I also think that if the concern is short-term rentals, that if you had language in there specifically designating short-term rentals are prohibited on the Great Ponds of Ellsworth, that would be, that would solve that problem.
I would guess I would say that my feedback is mainly that I want the regulations to apply to everyone, whether they own property or don't own property. And otherwise, I guess I would mostly be maybe interested to hear more from the community of people who live in that area in terms of what, whether it's sunset to sunrise, whether it's 10 to 4, that doesn't make any difference to me. And I do want to know, I mean, this just seems like, this seems, I guess I don't spend as much time out there, but a lot of boats will have to come out of the water at night. And maybe that's just not true, and everyone just has little boats that don't have toilets and don't have a bench that you can put a cushion on. So I would want, I would just want to know that it's, that's what the community really wants it to be. I'm comfortable with the idea of making an ordinance to protect, to protect the environment and to protect the intention of the enjoyment of the water, swimming, fishing, ice fishing, boating, things like that. I'm comfortable with the idea of the ordinance. I just want to make sure it's evenly applicable to people who live here, people who live on the lake and people who do not live on the lake. Thank you.
Counsel Kaplan.
Yeah, going along with what Counselor Hanson said, you know, as far as the ordinance, be careful what you wish for, because you might just get it. And if nobody can have any kind of a boat that's other than a canoe or kayak, then, you know, kind of limits your recreating ability, even if you do own property.
So my feedback is, a couple of things. One is, fully support, and it's a state law, the Great Ponds Act. Absolutely, everyone has a right to access the lakes. They have a right to access those body of water through the undeveloped land, not developed land. You don't have a right to go through individual private landowner property. But you have a right to enjoy the lake. And that should remain, and we should never have ordinances that would, would prevent that from happening. At the same time, in terms of taking out, we have it now. People who go from lake to lake to fish will put their boats in, they'll fish for the day, and they'll leave. And so I think the idea of this in terms of the rental, that should be a part and should probably be spelled out a little clearer in terms of that aspect of it. I do think there should be provision for, for landowners to have whatever vessels they have. If they're not renting it out, they should be able to have those anchored and moored on their property. So I think that would, that would help to clarify some of that. But it should, it should not prevent people from using it. And in fact, I remember the conversation that we had where that was discussed as what-if scenario, and there seemed to be some agreement, not in terms of wanting that, but if it came to that, that would be okay. And then just a general comment, kind of along the lines of what Counsel O'Halloran stated. These are issues that are complicated, and there are different sides to the issue. But it's a legitimate issue to discuss. Whatever your perspective is, this is the process. It's public input. This is democracy in terms of being able to have opinions. And you can have strong opinions about it. What I find frustrating is listening and seeing and reading the social media posts that turn it into something way beyond just having a discussion to threatening, threatening people's property, threatening people in general, and turning it into something that it doesn't need to be. We can, we can have honest disagreements, and we can have discussions. And I think for Ellsworth, isn't that what we want for a community, that we can disagree and have difference of opinion? And not every vote that the council takes is going to fit everybody in this room. It's going to vary. That's the part of, that's what's great, is you have a vote in terms of if you don't like decisions that are being made, then you can elect somebody else and try to push it forward. But I hope that the community becomes more tolerant in terms of recognizing that we can have discussions, and all kinds of issues come to this council. All kinds of issues come to the council. Some you like, some you don't. But if you don't like it, come and share your thoughts. But do it respectfully, and don't do it in the, in the way that I've seen some of it on social media. I just, that doesn't get anywhere. And I can tell you, as somebody who votes, certainly doesn't want me to vote in favor of that position for the person that is creating that kind of position and threatening. So. Counsel O'Halloran.
There was a handout in the audience there.
You know, I think I would say as far as your caddy thing, most of the homeowners have the boats registered, so that everybody knows what boat goes with what house and what, who it's going to be taxed on.
Counsel Blanchett, do you remember what a caddy is?
I do now. One of the things I would like to add is the time. 10 to 4 seems to be a bare minimum, to say the least. I'd like to see that extended a little bit. Whether you want to go with a strict time, you know, nine to five, whatever, eight to six, whatever it is. Sunset to sunrise might be a more palatable thing to consider.
Yeah, so I'll just provide some feedback as why we, the morning time at least, was chosen, was to allow for fishermen who want to get out on the water and have an early start. Being someone that goes on Green Lake to recreate, to look for salmon, I know that we go earlier than the sunrise sometimes.
You're fishing?
Sorry? No, I'm fishing, yeah. I'm fishing.
At 4:00 a.m.?
But there might be a bucket on board that could potentially be a temporary bathroom.
Time to move along.
I saw another hand out there in the audience.
It was just me. I was just, ours was registered, and we also own property on Green Lake.
Yeah, well.
That was just, oh, sorry.
Anything else on this matter? All right. Thank you.
Anything else on this matter? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, we're counts, we're tabling this for June meeting, not the special meeting next week?
No, not the special meeting next week, no. This is not.
Because we're going to need time to make revisions and public notice and all of that, all over again.
And I would, I guess I would leave it to staff to come back and let us know when you can place it on, on the agenda. If you can get to it in June or July, just, I think the public would appreciate the advance notice, and if you're not going to be able to present something that's definitive, then we should know that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 12, council order, or at this time, let me just ask the councillors, does anybody want to take a break, or shall we just keep moving forward? Number 12, council order number 051602, request of the police chief to allow the finance director to deposit forfeited funds into the police forfeiture reserve accounts.
Wait for the room clear. Very good. So you should all have in your packet the background information around this forfeiture. It was a drug-related case. An individual is found to be in possession of a presumptive amount, so monies that he had on him, which he admitted a portion of were drug proceeds, were seized, and we need the council authorization for us to move forward in the court system with the forfeiture.
Councilor.
Has this person been convicted?
Not yet, no. So the, so the council has to approve that we will accept the, if, accept the money, and then the court proceedings will take place, and if he's convicted and the forfeiture goes through, then, then we'll receive the funds. So we haven't actually, court process has not taken place yet.
We have to give the okay first, court process goes by, and then if he's convicted, then, yeah.
Correct.
So where's the money now?
The money now is in our evidence.
Cannot be disclosed.
No, I didn't mean it like that. What's the combination? So it's in your possession now, but you need permission to actually keep it into, in your possession.
Right, because after the, after the trial, if the court orders that the money be returned to the individual, then we return the money. If the court upholds the forfeiture, then the money retains with the police department.
Councilor.
Could maybe give me a lesson here. What happens to the money once you receive the money?
So the money goes into our, the police department's forfeiture account, and those funds can only be used for certain things. Equipment, they can't be, they cannot be used to pay for salaries, but it can be used for equipment or other needs that the police department has.
And it comes before the council.
Correct, yeah. Before we spend any forfeiture funds, any recommendation would come to the council for approval.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the transfer of the defendants in rem in the case of State of Maine versus Austin Craig Hamilton pursuant to 15 MRSA, section 5824-3 and section 5826-8 of the Maine revised statutes to the city of Ellsworth, and to allow the finance director to deposit those monies into the police forfeiture reserve account upon receipt of the funds.
Second.
You have a motion of second. Further discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Item 13, council order number 051603, request of the public works director to award the Red Bridge Road culvert replacement project engineering.
Good evening, councilors. Lisa Cyclage, Public Works Director. Back in April, I was at the council meeting to have this group accept the DEP stream crossing grant funds for the replacement of the Red Bridge Road over Branch Lake Stream culvert. I had the assistant, I had assistance with the application to the Maine DEP for this funding from Andrew McCullough Engineering. I'm now requesting that this group approve an engineering contract with Andrew McCullough Engineering to complete the design and then oversee the construction phase of the culvert replacement project.
Councilor.
We're just replacing the culvert, right?
Yes, so it'd be a new culvert, and then the road actually would get brought up a little bit, moly pavement and the whole, whole thing.
So if we're just replacing the culvert, which has already previously been engineered by whoever put the culvert there in the first place, why do we have to engineer it again?
So, this culvert's 30-plus years old. There's something now called Stream Smart, which requires you to do 1.2 times bank full width. It's for animals and fish and that type of thing, so the current culvert is too small, and so we have to engineer to have a bigger culvert.
I thought that was a pretty big culvert there.
No, it's going to get much bigger.
How, how large is the culvert now?
Uh, I wouldn't, I don't know off the top of my head. But the new one is going to max out, I believe it's 24 feet, 26 feet.
Should be cool.
And the one now is at least 15, 20 feet.
Probably 15.
And so animals and fish can't get through that.
It's a whole different DEP regulations. It's a requirement of DEP and inland fisheries.
Councilor.
What's driving this whole project?
The fact that the current culvert is failing, or.
Could you elaborate a little bit?
It's, it's, okay, it's not failing, it's at the end of its useful life. The culvert is starting to rot out.
Okay.
When the metal culvert rots out and it gives way, the whole road's going to collapse. So in the next five years, seven years, 10 years, can't say for sure, if we left it and did nothing, we could end up with a giant sinkhole essentially, or a collapse.
Did this go out, did you solicit other bids, or did you just stick with our local?
So this one does not require, so previous, depending upon where we get money and how we get money from different entities, they require different, there's different requirements for putting out RFPs. This one does not require an RFP, so Andrew helps with the application to the DEP for the funding, and thus I am then asking to continue using his services.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the request of the public works director to award engineering of the Red Bridge Road over the Branch Lake Stream culvert replacement project to Andrew McCullough Engineering for not to exceed amount of $57,100. Funding for this project to be from the local roads capital improvement account 9090900-59001 and grant funds.
Second.
Yeah, a motion of second. Discussion.
I just think it's already been engineered. I don't, I don't see why we're.
It's not the same as a regular just culvert you put in the ground. So around culvert that the highway department puts in the ground, it's a piece of plastic, there's no engineering involved. This type of culvert is going to be, it's not just a culvert, it's considered a culvert because it's metal, it's corrugated, and it looks like culvert, but it has concrete headwalls on the bottom so that the metal will not rust out. It's taking out, right now it's a full metal culvert, bottom rust out, everything collapses. We're going in and we're putting in concrete foundations, headwalls, and then a corrugated metal top, essentially. Totally different thing, still considered a culvert, but that's something that requires engineering. It's essentially a smaller bridge. And this is for engineering as well as construction oversight. So when we get to the part where we're actually building it, he'll oversee to make sure the concrete is tested and it's good and it's going to last us for the next 50 years. He's going to make sure that they do soil detection, he's going to make sure that the asphalt, it's, it's, he's going to assist us to make sure that what we spend this money on is going to last, outlast probably all of us in this room.
And we don't have anybody within our staff that could do something similar?
Uh, engineer this? Probably not.
Probably not or definitely not?
Uh, I have never done one like this before myself. Could I potentially? Do I have the time? No.
Is this, this been a, for the Roads Commission Committee, this has been, something's been identified, right?
Yeah, through the local roads, yep.
Councilor.
If there's a need, I'm all for giving it to the local engineer, and thank you for working with this man.
I do on many occasions.
Any other?
And so this, this, this is something that we are required by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection to do?
No, it's something we're requesting to do before it fails.
But when we do it, whether it's now or in the future, it does require the engineering?
It will require engineering, yes.
So what, at whatever point?
At whatever point we do it, it will have to be engineered, yes.
Because whatever, whatever point we do it, we have to follow DEP's rules when we do it.
We will forever have to do the 1.2 times bank full width, yes.
And I would guess that engineering of a failed culvert that has collapsed is a whole hell of a lot more expensive than the engineering cost of a replacement culvert.
The engineering may be the same, but the construction will be 10 times more.
Bingo.
All right, we have a motion of seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you. And we, there was a picture when I came in April of the type of culvert I'm talking about, so if you have your April packet, it shows more of what it, it looks like, just for.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item 14, presentation by Green Ellsworth on budget consideration sponsored by Councilor Hanson. Do you want to introduce it?
Sure. I have asked members of Green Ellsworth to give a presentation tonight. Green Ellsworth is a community organization that was started in 2017 as a collaboration between the Ellsworth Garden Club and the city planner's office. So it's a collaboration between our community and city staff. Over the course of the three years after that, over 2,000 members of our community engaged with the process through surveys, interviews, workshops, and other meetings. After the three years of gathering information from the citizens, businesses, and stakeholders, the volunteers created a Green Plan document in 2021 outlining this, a strategic plan to protect our community in the categories of water, food and farming, land, transportation, and energy and solid waste. In the past five months of being a city councillor, I've heard a lot about essential infrastructure projects that have been kicked down the road and now need to be addressed. All of these projects will require time, money, and energy. Unless we plan to continually raise taxes, which nobody wants, I think the only way to tackle these large goals is to engage members of our community. Green Ellsworth has an impressive number of volunteers, many of whom have expertise in Ellsworth's natural resources. They are willing to volunteer their expertise for the benefit of our community, and they have shown that they are willing to do the legwork that can help the city successfully apply for grant money to help offset the costs of these necessary projects that we've put off in the past. So Gary Fortier and Nicole Brohowski are going to present a Green Ellsworth document that we received back in February with their advice about budget concerns, which felt appropriate during this budget season.
Thank you, Councilor Hanson, for sponsoring this. First off, I apologize for the snafu earlier. I couldn't sit there and be quiet and let you guys get yourself in trouble, so thank you for dealing with that the way you do it. As councillors mentioned, this is a citizens' room. I was asked as a city councillor back in 17 to be the liaison between that table and the group by Michelle Dagnon, our city planner. I had branched out into the Ellsworth Green Action Team, which does the solid waste and energy efficient end of it. That's where my interest was. Tonight on the table, not knowing whether you had in your packet, I put a four-page document, which is what you should have received in February. I apologize for the notes on it. I have my dirty copy. I didn't have a clean one to photocopy for you. One of the most important issues that we as a group have been working on is trying to position Ellsworth's for a successful comprehensive plan. All the studies that you see listed on page one, we as a group feel are necessary in order to do a full-depth comprehensive plan. There's a lot of money involved, but there's a lot of money to be lost. You ask all your planners and economic development how many points you lose immediately on grants when they find out you don't have a current comprehensive plan. We're in violation of state law because we don't have one, so they, they take points away. I'm going to go down and just highlight a few of the budget allocations that what we did was take our chronological steps of the Green Plan and pick off, pick off the, what we thought were the most important immediate capital improvements and funding that we, as a group, thought we wanted you to tackle first. And as I said, on, on the first page, you've got all the studies, and I'm just going to touch on this. We've got an incredible code enforcement office, but you're understaffed. Since Dwight Tilton left, building in Ellsworth has exponentially rose faster than we kept up the staff, so that's, that's, I think, the one position in here that we would love to see you do something with. Sustainability seed funding, Planet Gagner years ago, we had a fund like that for drainage issues, and has, I don't think has been used in the last few years. Codbrook, we all know that the city's going to have to do something pretty substantial out there to meet with the DEP, need some grant money. That may already be in the budget. I haven't seen this year's budget. And someone made a comment previous that if you really want to protect your lakes, stat check and septic systems. Excellent point. Branch Lake Group did a comprehensive water quality study around the lake a couple of years ago. Point source pollution is, is a big threat out there. You'll see in here that we're looking at pooling some money with possibly Orland to get rid of the sedimentation that comes from our joint drainage and roads out around Four Corners, Winkapar, and Happy Town. We don't think that's a taxpay issue. We think that's a water quality issue that, similar to when we bought the Fenn property years ago to protect, it's much cheaper to protect the quality of the water than clean it after it's dirty. And just so you know, one-third of the city tax dollars is derived from shorefront property. So when that property gets devalued, your tax base goes down. Volunteers designate $20,000 in matching funds and work with partner organizations, of which we have numerous. I'm not going to try to list them here, but if you go on our website at Ellsworth, greenellsworth.org, you'll see a number of local organizations that have partnered with us in this effort. We'd like to continue the partnership with the city on the Project Canopy grant that we just did out by McDonald's. We'd like to continue with that. There's a good opportunity at the Jordan Homestead down the Bayside Road. Frenchman Bay Conservancy is building a tree fountain. Fence it in and nurture trees up so we can plant them all over the city. That may be something that the city is interested in partnering with to replace some ones on high streets you'd have to pay full dollar for them. Comprehensive transportation culvert study. Comprehensive transportation corridor study. Big money. I would suggest that you people that have been elected in the last five years have heard a lot about the traffic in Ellsworth. When I first got on in ninety-two, all I heard was the traffic in Ellsworth, and we haven't fixed it yet. So, um, another thing to do with transportation is I know the manager has people working on it. But we need to take over the streetlights, turn them into LEDs. Now that we've cleared the net energy billing hurdle of being able to include the streetlights on the billing, it, it's a no-brainer to get them done for the environment and as well as the pocketbook. Drainage improvements. Um, I don't think Councilor Blanchett was there when we talked about, when, when the hospital built their emergency room, they were talking about starting up on Carlisle Street and going to the river with an all-new drainage system. That was probably eight to nine million dollars back then. Guess what? It's probably eighteen to twenty now. It's going to be thirty or thirty-five in a couple of years. So that's one of those capital improvement projects that may want to be looked at, to bond now and pay as you go to get it done. Some of our members are really interested in following up with the manager on, uh, converting over to some EVs, electric vehicles. I know we were, he tried to get one in the last budget cycle and it just wasn't anything around. Cost-cutting and revenue generation proposals.
Gary, stand off for just a second. On the, um, EV vehicle, um, either EV or hybrid? I'd stick with the hybrid.
There are some places I agree with you. I don't want a cop car sitting on the Van Gogh Road, run out electricity.
Well, and, and I don't want, I don't want staff driving a car, uh, getting hung up in traffic, let's say, on one A in the wintertime. And, you know, they've, they've got twenty minutes of, uh, heat left.
That's a management decision. We're just recommending. There was some conversation in the two thousand four comp plan about open space development fees. It was never done. Citywide policy of idling city vehicles to reduce use of fossil fuels. Very easy to do. Expand recycling. That's one from my committee that I serve on. Even if you get a dollar a ton for number four plastic, you're saving seventy-eight dollars a ton not having to lug it to Perk. So there is a savings there. And with everything being blown around the city, we had roadside pickup this spring and got bags and bags and bags of stuff outside of the road. Plenty of grants out there, Shore and Harbor Planning Grants, Main Coastal Program, American Rescue Plan Act funds that, uh, haven't seen a list of where you expect to spend those. And that's about all I'm going to talk about, other than it's, it's been, um, very interesting to work with this group of environmentally conscious people. I call them my, my, I don't say that. But they're there for the right reason. We're, we're trying to help the city get to a comprehensive plan that matches what our citizens want. We've had thirty or forty presentations on Zoom and in person attended by two to three thousand people total. And we've taken their input and we've put it into this plan. I invite you to go on our website. The whole plan is there. It's enormous. I'm going to turn it over to our state rep, Nicole Grahowski, until you get done with me.
Don't you?
Who, who is going to, uh, talk to you about what assets there are to the state. Yes, sir?
So I, the, the question I have is the reality about energy costs. What we all know is it costs to produce energy regardless of what type of, what way you're producing it. Um, and we all know where the electricity is at now. We also know that there are limits on how that electricity is produced and the cost. So there's always a cost. It's a matter of who's paying for the cost. And, and I don't always hear that perspective, that balance of the reality in some of these proposals, um, in terms of pushing costs in one direction and not looking at the overall efficiency and effectiveness of that. And it's not to say that there, that it isn't, doesn't have a role and a place. But I guess I'm wondering where the committee stands in terms of having an open mind and to look at the reality of situation and, um, balance that plan with something that's sustainable from a fiscal perspective. Because what I know is that any plan that is going to be too expensive, that cannot be afforded by the majority of the population, is never going to be constructed. And so if there isn't a willingness to look at that and come up with a balanced approach, then the, the positive parts of it get lost just on, on that basis alone. And so I'm just, I'm wondering, I don't see that in the plan. I don't see it in the, the overall plan. I see one side presented. Is there a willingness of the committee to, to really look at that issue?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I'd, I'd agree with you a hundred percent. I wouldn't feel comfortable charging up my EV or anything and saying that it's, it's rechargeable if I knew that that electricity was being made with natural gas or oil or coal. Uh, it's like the solar project that the city signed on with. We can't say that we're using solar power. We're not. We're buying the energy credits. And the team that we had working on that, I was part of after I was off council, everybody's giving you fifteen percent off your light bill if you sign up Community Solar. Well, your team negotiated a twenty-six percent discount on these credits. So, um, that, that's unheard of in, in this area for, for a company to do that, but this is a group of knowledgeable, responsible people that will look at everything if you ask them to.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Counselor Hamilton.
Mr. Counselor.
If, if there was one thing that in your mind floats to the top in this list, what would that one thing be?
Personally?
Yeah.
Get a comprehensive plan done. It's going to feed all the grantsmanship that'll help us do the rest of it. But until you get a comprehensive plan on the books, approved by your, uh, citizens and the state, we lose points in every grant we go.
So a lot of all this is the comprehensive plan.
Choose one. Personally, I'm not speaking for the whole Green Plan.
I understand.
But me, it would be get the darn plan done. And Green Ellsworth stands ready and willing to be part of that because we have the people, we have the expertise, um, to do that. So we stand ready and willing to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor.
Counselor.
Are you familiar with the seventeen Sustainable Development Goals from the UN Agenda Twenty Thirty?
No.
I recommend that you read that because that's where all of this is actually coming from. And it was signed by a hundred and sixty nations in, I believe it was nineteen ninety-two. And it's not just about green. Green is the mask for the control that this represents with ordinances.
Number?
Agenda Twenty Thirty. It started off as Agenda Twenty One, the Agenda for the Twenty-First Century. The new one is Agenda Twenty Thirty, which is the agenda that we have to reach by twenty thirty, and then of course Agenda Twenty Fifty. And once you familiarize yourself with that and dive down that rabbit hole, start looking at the UN DESA meetings from the UN, which, I, I want a clean environment. I want sustainability. I like walking paths. But for every, everything you give up here in a grant, you have to give up something else.
It's a trade-off for everything, isn't it?
Yes. It talks about moving all Americans, the globe, away from a meat-based diet. All of us.
Mike would agree with that, but I wouldn't.
But you may not have a choice. All of the things that you see going up in price right now are by design. Gas, beef, milk, eggs, dairy. It's by design. Look at the meeting minutes under UN Agenda Twenty Thirty, which is where this stuff is based, seventeen Sustainable Development Goals. Okay? It specifically talks about population control. It talks about reducing the global population. And it's not conspiracy theory when it's in the United Nations Open Meetings that you can watch for yourself. And this stuff, I can sign on to EVs, but EVs don't pay gas tax. Okay? Those gas taxes help build the roads.
I agree a hundred percent.
I think that some of the things are great. I would not be with anything that's restricting anyone's individual liberty or their private property rights. Just because I want to put a culvert in a ditch does not mean that that's a wetland. And they started this from the ground up with planning boards. The International Commission on Environmental Initiatives, ICLI, started it by training the planning boards with restrictive codes that they could then control private property rights. And I think the more people that know about Agenda Twenty One, Agenda Twenty Thirty, and Agenda Twenty Fifty, the more we can fight back against it. It's the very reason I ran for council.
Thank you. I'll work.
Counselor Hamilton.
Um, well, I just think Green Ellsworth, I mean, Gary, who's the spokesperson for it tonight, didn't know about Plan Twenty Twenty-One, so I think we can safely assume that Green Ellsworth as an organization isn't part of a global UN-related conspiracy. I mean, its goals are to solve some of the problems that we're having locally. And the, there's only going to be one, the money's going to come from the taxpayer or it's going to come from some kind of grants. There's no other way. So.
I, I, I tell you folks, I have on my wall, I have it in my office, I call it the me-wall. It's got all my plaques and letters from governors and stuff like that. I have one up there where I was accused of treason by a former city councilor because I advocated to join the MDI League of Towns, and that was a UN doctrine, League of Cities, that had nothing to do with us. But I, I actually have a notary accusation of treason. So.
Wow. The grants come with strings. And those strings come with restrictions. And the restrictions come with ordinances, especially when we're looking at a comprehensive plan.
Good evening, everyone. Hi. Nicole Grahowski, citizen of Ellsworth, your state representative. I'm sorry we didn't get to sort of finish our presentation before we went to questions, but, um, I mainly, we've been here a long night, I know, so I don't want to go on for long, but I mainly wanted to point out, um, how many citizens, how many of the people that we both serve have participated in this process, have come to that with their own personal expertise, professional expertise, not being guided by anyone but their own knowledge and experience living in this community and in the many jobs that they've had. They've come together, they've listened to citizens and other residents, um, of the region to come up with this plan. Um, as Gary, uh, easily went through, uh, the document, we have identified a lot of places for short-term action. Uh, you'll notice on that document, there are a lot of places where we've identified where the American Rescue Plan funding could come from, and other places we've identified where there are state opportunities. Those are really important to me because when I knock on the doors of constituents in this community, I hear a lot about problems that need to be solved, but also the competing concern about taxes. So I think it behooves all of us who've served as citizens of Ellsworth to look for opportunities to supplement taxpayer dollars in order to solve these problems. Additionally, I think it's important that we look towards citizens who are willing to give their time and their energy in kind and their expertise to help us solve these problems. For a number of years, uh, people on the committee that I serve on with Gary, the Ellsworth Green Action Team, have been asking, could citizens join the Solid Waste Committee? We see that there are counselors on that committee who, um, really want to participate, but there are so many burdens on your time as public servants. I fully recognize that, and I thank you for that service because I know it's not easy. And so we wonder, you know, could we help? You know, we have knowledge, we have time, we have experience to share. To Gary's point about recycling, the amount of money we could make if we were recycling Boxport right now is significant. Those prices have gone up in the market and there are citizens who would be happy to be consulting with the city and suggesting opportunities for generating revenue because we do not want any of the things that we're proposing to end up costing taxpayers more than what they are already paying now. In fact, we'd like to see savings through, uh, doing maintenance at the time. We should be doing maintenance, accessing grants when they are available. Yes, we should look at the stipulations in the grants to make sure that they benefit the citizens that we serve, uh, but we shouldn't shy away from them. And I agree a hundred percent with Gary that the number one thing we need to do is finish that comprehensive plan. I looked on the website, uh, the state website today about, um, the community development, uh, community block development grants and found that we haven't received one since two thousand sixteen. Uh, between nineteen ninety-four and two thousand sixteen, we received three point six million dollars. Boxport in that time has received five point seven million dollars. I think that we need to do better for our citizens because that is money that they are not paying through their taxes to solve the problems that we hear about every day, such as what's going on with our traffic? Are, are, do we need extra streetlights? Do we want a walking path along the river? There are so many of these concerns that I hear that I'm sure many of you hear that we'd like to address, but we need to be sensitive to how we address them. So I just want to say it's been a privilege to work with many of you, uh, as we've served concurrently. And that if there are programs at the state level that you have questions about, that I can get information about, or you wonder, is Ellsworth eligible or not, you can always feel free to reach out to me. Staff can feel free to reach out to me. I want to make sure that the solutions we're creating at the state level benefit people here in Ellsworth and don't go to benefit other communities and not us because I work really hard with my colleagues to try to create programs that will solve the problems that I hear about, but we have to make sure that we are accessing them here as well. So I just want to say that I'm happy to be a resource. I'm thrilled to hear, um, from your Public Works and your Economic Development Director a plan to access a new infrastructure adaptation fund for stormwater. The application is due at the end of this month, and they have, um, an application in process that I'm very supportive of. So I, I just want you to know that there is a lot of, um, interest from staff to do this kind of work and to connect with state resources, but any opportunities that I see, I always try to flag them, and certainly if there's ones that you have questions about as counselors or staff have questions about, I want to be that resource, um, so that we can solve problems for the citizens of Ellsworth. Thank you.
If I may, Counselor Hamilton, I just want, Hamilton, I just want to add that, um, we have staff members, particularly Economic Development Director Jana and, and Lisa Sokolich in our Public Works Department that work on grant applications virtually daily. And they're always pursuing different opportunities and ways to divert the cost of many of the needs of the city. And they work tirelessly to find additional funds, uh, and to, to make that burden less on, on our citizens. So. I certainly, and we certainly are willing to and, and anxious to help, to offer and work with others who want to help to further that cause. But I think it has to be said that, that our staff works tirelessly to pursue those opportunities as it is.
All right. Anything else?
I would just note that, you know, as far as the restricting property rights, you know, it's just interesting that it's requesting that we increase the code enforcement officers to a total of three. So that just kind of goes along with restrictions. I mean, yes, I like trees. I like clean water, but I'm not for restricting private property rights.
I, I would just comment on that point. I believe that right now you have one code enforcement officer and one person who is doing administration for that office, whereas previously we had two code enforcement officers.
Well, we have, we have a code enforcement officer and we have. and we have a deputy who also does fire and life safety. We still have two code enforcement. And actually, our administrative person in there is also learning and has capacity to do some code enforcement as well because she has received some certification.
I had just heard, and I can't actually even remember who I heard this from, that like, for example, on Branch Lake, that there are people who are building things without getting permits for them. And not that the code enforcement officers aren't working hard, but if they had more support staff than they could be following up on these things that would be losing Ellsworth money if people aren't getting permits or paying for the buildings they actually have on their property.
They pay taxes.
Right, but only if you are assessed for what your actual property is.
But that's not done by code enforcement. That's done by assessing. Code enforcement goes out and enforces building code and fire and life safety codes. And they, all of the information that comes through the Planning Department and through, goes through code for inspection. And certainly if they find out about construction, they will go to that site immediately and follow up with that. I'm not aware of any construction on Branch Lake that's going on without correct code enforcement involvement and building codes and building permits. And certainly if they do and we find out about it, we can go out and code can pursue that and get those building permits after the fact.
Yeah, I should ask for specific examples of that. I just can't remember who told me that.
I do agree with the idea. I think a plan, and that's why I've supported us moving forward with the comprehensive plan. I think you have to have a plan first and then come up with strategies and come up with the right strategies to solve the right problem. And I think that probably this group's out in front because you've been doing the work and you've moved to the place with some recommendations. But I do think as a community, everybody needs to have that opportunity to participate and then we can prioritize and come up with the solutions that work to solve whatever the problem is that are identified in that planning effort. So.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Item 15, executive session pursuant to 1 MRS A. Section 405.6d to discuss labor negotiations between the City of Ellsworth and the Ellsworth Police Association affiliated with the main association of police, MAP.
So moved.
This is motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor? All opposed? We are going into executive session.
So you were tired?
Yes.